For Butters is 1-508-539-1449. And that's a change because of the separated room. Okay, and we're going to insist that it's going to be a one-minute time later for a Butters remote calls because of the two phone line situation and the on-hold situation. And a couple of things that will help the meeting go a little smoother. It'd be better if we raise our hands to be recognized to speak. And when others are speaking, if you mute your phone, that'll stop the background interference. So if now if we could all rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, George has made it, so we're all set now. Okay, Sharon and Bob are absent tonight, but Bill Blaisdell and Jim Gould are joining us via remote Zoom. And the rest of the staff is here at Town Hall. So sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our five regular board members. And George, would you mind reading the first two continued hearings? And we'll vote on them one at a time.
54 Bayberry Drive. Fishner Mark Colhane requests a variance from the front and side yard setbacks under section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension to an existing three-bedroom dwelling on property located in R-5 zoning district, map 23, parcel 202, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Thora J. Cristo, continued from January 12, 2022 hearings. 54 Bayberry Drive. Fishner Mark Colhane requests a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in R5, R-5 zoning district, map 23, parcel 202, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record Thora J. Cristo, continued from January 12, 2022 hearings.
Okay. You and I can share. Would you grab that on the second question? Scott?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing Mark Colhane, who is the owner's Thora Cristo's representative, general contractor. We're here tonight on two applications. One is for a variance to the side yard setback, and the second is for a specific finding for a change alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I sent in a written presentation, so you should see photographs and the plan as well. I've highlighted where the additions are going. There is a two-car garage and a two-bedroom second story on the north easterly side of the building, and there's a one-story addition on the south westerly side of the structure. There's also a covered porch proposed. We are requesting a variance of 5 feet 6 inches for the garage and the second-story addition, which again has two bedrooms. The reason for that is that anywhere else to place this, I don't know if anybody's been to the site, but it severely slopes from the front of the lot to the rear of the lot, so there is a significant topography issue. Even if you look at the pictures that we've had, if you look at the rear of the house, there's substantial exposed foundation. The back deck is significantly raised above the ground level. So, you know, again, in order to, you know, to put any type of addition in the backyard would require either substantial fill or substantial foundation. So we would suggest that a variance in this particular case, given the topography, which is unusual for the other lots on Bayberry Drive, they're all pretty flat, other than this one. This one backs up on the, I believe, a swampland, and Mark can correct me. Can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But so that's why we're requiring the variance. There was a request for a variance for the front yard setback, but I don't believe that's necessary. The front yard setback's already non-conforming, so I believe that that would just fit under the alteration to a existing non-conforming structure. And then again, as part of the application for the, all the additions is the request for the specific finding. In this particular case, again, it's a single-family residence. We're adding the two-car garage, the two bedrooms above, and the one-story addition. So we're not, you know, it's keeping in, you know, the feel for that neighborhood. So we would suggest that that would be appropriate as well. This is a, the reason is that this is a, Thora and her partner have three children, two are teenage girls, so looking for a little bit more space. So that's certainly why the two bedrooms above the garage are requested, along with the, of the garage itself. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board at this time.
All right, well, yeah, they, you were here two weeks ago.
Mark was, Mark was here, has been here a couple times before my involvement, so I don't know if there was any discussions at that time, but...
Well, there was not a discussion about the back, and I'm glad you pointed that out. It looks like it goes from 74 down to 60 and even lower.
Yes.
So I agree with you. There's certainly a topography issue.
Right. Yeah, and I don't know...
I really don't have a problem.
Okay. And I don't know if the pictures do it as much justice as what it is, but if you go out to the site, you can really tell. And then as, where the lawn ends and starts, there's an even more severe slope at that point in time, so...
Yeah, it's a, and of course, a corner lot anyway, so I had no problems with the front and the right side if you're facing the house from Bayberry. So I had no problems with that in the first place, so...
Are you asking then for no relief on the front yard setback?
No, no variance relief. I don't believe any is required, so we're just simply asking for the written, the written finding for the covered porch and the first floor addition.
So you're going, so I presume you're going to ask to have that dismissed or removed?
Yes, I can, surely yes.
Okay. So how much side yard relief you, so the only you're seeking in variance is side?
That is correct.
To what extent?
5 feet 6 inches.
So, and what's, what's existing?
Uh, it's just driveway.
No, but what's, what amount is existing?
Oh, it's, it's complying now. It's over 30 feet.
Okay, so then the 30, it's required in that zone at 30?
No, 15.
15, and it will be?
It will be...
If the Board approves it?
9 feet 4 inches.
9 foot 4 inches, thus being 6 foot 6, right? Is that right?
5.6, 5.6.
So the only you're seeking, if this Board chooses to approve, is a side yard relief in the amount of 5 foot 6 inches?
Correct.
And a written finding?
Correct.
For clarity, someone would make a motion.
Absolutely.
Anybody have anything? Bill?
No, and the written finding allows for the extension or alteration of a pre-existing nonconformity for that front yard, right?
Correct.
Jim, anything? Jim Gould? You muted? I don't think you can hear us. Jim, can you hear me? Okay, Jim?
I think he muted himself.
Yeah, so...
Jim, Jim seems to be locked out. No, I'm, I'm fine.
Jim, anything at all?
No, I have nothing at all. I was sort of trying to think about what Bill was saying. I'm sorry.
That's all right. George?
No.
Charlie?
No.
Brad?
He skipped me.
You didn't care.
Maybe there's a reason.
I'm going to wait to the Board of Health comments, but I have something that I noticed. I'll wait for the comments to be read from Board of Health, but there is something that caught my attention.
Okay. So let's see, we've got some comments from...
Board of Health.
Go ahead.
Can I read them?
Yeah, please.
Board of Health comments, 54 Bayberry Drive. Board of Health comments. The change in footprint of the foundation requires a septic inspection to be performed with report to be submitted prior to building permit approval. The floor, floor plans depict three bedrooms. The attic slash storage shall remain unfinished.
That was my question. Attorney Corain, didn't you say they were going to do a finished space above the garage?
They were doing a finished space over the garage. I don't know if Mark can speak to the attic space. So it's three bedrooms now, and it's staying three bedrooms, so...
They're questioning the attic space.
Just grab the mic if you would. And again, your, your name for the record.
Mark Colhane. Thank you. The attic space that they're questioning is above the master bedroom addition, because that could be accessed from the existing second floor.
Okay, okay.
And that, and that will be a, that'll just be a crawl space access, not a full-size door.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if you want to condition that it has to, you know, it's obviously Board of Health has required it to be three-bedroom, so if they finish the space in the garage, it has to stay three-bedroom.
So that would be on the written finding? What's variance? That be a written finding, right? Condition?
Um, well, it'd be...
It'd probably be part of the written finding since the, that's really, covers the whole.
Yeah, it's just Glenn didn't really specify. It just says attic storage, and you could call space above garage attic storage.
So that would say that the plan needs to clearly depict, and it had to be constructed as a three-bedroom home, right?
Yeah.
That was my only concern, just for dotting eyes.
And town engineer?
Town engineer comments, February 23rd, 2022, 54 Bayberry Drive. No issues, seems like a reasonable request.
Okay. And conservation?
I don't think I saw any.
I don't think that...
At DPW, I didn't see anything from conservation.
Conservation, I think they had something that simply said it's, it's wetland behind it, but the...
Yeah, well, okay, we have something from Catherine Laurent.
Yep. Reference zoning board of appeals dated Wednesday, January 12, 2022, Karen Laurent, Metro Town Hall, to Mary Ann Romano. Good morning, Mary Ann. Reference 54 Bayberry Drive. The site plan for this property shows that the existing driveway was widened at some point in the past, at a portion of the driveway extends into the adjacent property. As Bayberry Drive is a town road, a paved apron is required over the entire width of a driveway. A curb cut permit from the DPW is required for the driveway as shown if it is to remain or for any modification. Thank you, Catherine. Mashpee DPW.
Okay, so that brings up a question about the driveway being on somebody else's property?
Yeah, it looks like from the, if you look at the site plan, it looks like somehow when they, it's, it's not really a paved driveway now, but a portion of it seems to be on the neighbors. But the plan is, as part of this process to, Mark will be pulling the curb cut permit, and we'll be bringing the driveway onto the property, so it's off of the neighbor's property.
The existing driveway wouldn't line up with the garage correctly.
Yeah, it's, the whole drive's going to be altered.
How does the plan show now?
It's on that one right there.
Does it show?
It shows that there's an encroachment.
Show us the way it is or the way it will be?
The way it is.
I'm sorry?
The way it is now, presently.
Okay, so if we, if we approve the plan, we have to approve it with the way it's going to be, not the way it is.
Well, it could...
So you've got to change the plan before we can sign it, correct?
I'm sure you could add, I think Sam...
So you can send this in?
Yes, yes, can I, can I have the, have Sam alter the driveway for you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Then we can sign the plan.
Right. Appreciate it.
So make sure that's part of it.
So that would be raised and replaced?
The driveway moves off of the adjacent property. A new plan shows up. Dave, any? Any comments at all? Chris, any?
No, I just suggested they ask Catherine for the depth of the paved apron before they revise the plan.
Okay, we also have an email. Do you have that one? George?
I have it for Wilson Grove. I don't have it...
Okay, why don't I read it? It's, see if I have a date on this. Excuse me, no, this is not it. This is for something else. Okay. Uh, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Anybody on the phone have anything regarding this hearing? Okay, seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. First thing is, Chris, could you, would you please ask for a withdrawal of the front yard setback variance?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, as part of this application, I am requesting that a withdrawal of the request for a variance for the front yard setback.
Okay. You want to make a motion on that?
Uh, sure. I'd like to make a motion that we allow the applicant, where is it? For 54 Bayberry Drive to withdraw the...
Actually, can you make the motion?
What happened? You want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant, Chris Corain's attorney's request for a withdrawal from a variance relief at 54 Bayberry Drive, owner Mark Colhane. That's in reference to the front yard setback.
Correct.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Jim, seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance from the side yard setbacks under 174, section 174-31 at 54 Bayberry Drive. Owner Mark Colhane of the zoning...
Mr. Bondi, correction, owner is Thora Cristo.
So he's just a petitioner?
He's a petitioner.
I always get, I don't understand how a petitioner can't, doesn't have to be the owner. But that's okay. I'll correct my motion. I'd like to make a motion to issue a variance for the side yard setback to Mark Colhane at 54 Bayberry Drive. Okay, is that okay? Or would you rather him just be stated as a petitioner?
Um, I would just maybe add just Thora Cristo owner.
Okay, that's, would you say that again?
Sure. Thora, T-H-O-R-A, Cristo. I think it's a...
Okay.
C-H-R-I-S-T-O. She's the owner. I think it was part of, when the, when it was read into the record.
Yeah, owner of record, so all right, but it's on the bond. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance from the side yard setback to Thora Cristo of 54 Bayberry Drive under section, from section 174-31 of the zoning bylaw to allow for an addition extension to an existing three-bedroom dwelling property located in R5 zoning district, map 23 parcel 202, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Thora J. Cristo with the following conditions. One, Board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of variance under Master General Law 48, section 10. Plot plan proposed addition at 54 Bayberry Drive, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Thora Gilson.
I think that's her maiden name or former name.
Prepared by J, so again, we add another dynamics. It's okay. Prepared by JC Engineering, Inc., scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, October 18, 2021. Three, new floor plan for 54 Bayberry Drive, Mashpee, Mass., scale quarter inch equals 1 foot, date 9/15/2021. Design drawn by Colhane Carpentry LLC, A1, first floor plan, A2, second floor plan, A3, new basement foundation floor plan, A4, new elevation. Details, A5, new elevation details, A6, new section details, A7, new section details, A8, first floor frame details, A9, second floor frame detail. The Board issues a variance for the side yard setback in the amount of 5.6 tenths of a foot. The requirement is 15 feet, and the plan clearly depicts 9.4 feet. Condition upon all town department comments read into the record. Condition also on the DPW director comments read in the record. And condition that all changes to the plans require, any and all changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Okay, before we do that, is it 9.6 tenths?
Well, it's 9 feet 4 inches is the, the new dimension will be 9 feet 4 inches. The variance request of what we need is 5 feet 6 inches.
So I said tenths.
Right.
Right, so it's not...
It's actually 9.4 feet.
9.4 feet.
So that's why I looked, that's why I looked over to you and I said tenths.
That's why I'm an attorney and not a architect or surveyor.
Chris, did you see me look at it when I said tenths?
You've done enough of these, I figured...
Yeah, so I will amend my variance to say that the required side yard is 15 feet. The plan depicts 9 foot 4 inches.
Correct.
And so the amount of the relief is 5 foot 6 inches.
Correct.
No.
5 feet 6 inches.
5 foot 6 inches.
It's decimal.
It's decimal, not inches.
Oh, so that, yeah, so it's 5, 5 foot 8 inches.
There you go.
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
You gave me 5 foot 6.
That's what I...
It's 5 foot 8.
5 foot 8 inches. Oh, yes, because, yeah, 10, yeah. As I said, that's...
They didn't do math in law school.
Not in law school, that's for sure.
Yeah, but we straightened this out.
Hey, this is for the record.
Yeah, it's 5 foot 8 inches.
Didn't it say 9.4 feet, though? Isn't it in tenths?
To me, it's in tenths.
But that's why I asked. So it'll be 5 foot 6 tenths.
5, 5.6 feet.
No.
5 foot 6 tenths.
5.6 feet. Yeah, don't say inches. Don't say inches.
5 foot 6 tenths.
5.6 feet.
5 foot.
It's the same as 5.6 feet.
Yeah, but it's not inches. It's not inches.
Can't say inches.
So my original motion stands.
It was correct.
Let me make clarification. The front yard setback requires 15 feet. The plan depicts 9 foot 4 tenths.
4 tenths.
Of a foot.
Yes.
Okay? So the required relief or the requested relief is 5 foot 8 tenths of a foot.
No.
Yeah, I just changed 5 foot 6 tenths of a foot.
Yeah.
Okay, we all set? We in agreement here?
I think so. I'll, you know, my contract, my contractor could confirm the numbers.
The motion, the first, was right.
Right. Well, that's why I looked at you and said yes.
Exactly. Okay, do we have a second?
I do.
Jim, seconds, all right? Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding under 174-17 to Thora J. Cristo of 54 Bayberry Drive to allow for the addition extension to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in R5 zoning district, map 23 parcel 202, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Thora J. Cristo with the following conditions. One, Board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Master General Law 48, section 6. Plot plan, number two, plot plan, proposed addition at 54 Bayberry Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Thora Gilson, prepared by JC Engineering, Inc., scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, October 18, 2021. Three, new floor plan for 54 Bayberry Drive, Mashpee, Mass., scale quarter inch equals 1 foot, date 9/15/2021. Design drawn by Colhane Carpentry LLC, A1, first floor plan, A2, second floor plan, A3, new basement foundation floor plan, A4, new elevation details, A5, new elevation details, A6, new section details, A7, new section details, A8, first floor frame details, A9, second floor frame details. Number four, condition on DPW director comments that have been read into the record. Number five, condition all town department comments read in the record. Number six, condition that all changes, any and all changes may to the plan require applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals. Number seven, the plan will clearly depict, and the maximum amount of bedrooms allowed under this written finding is three. Number eight, prior to the submission of a building permit to the town of Mashpee, the applicant will amend the plan and clearly depict that the driveway is on the applicant's land in totality and not on the Butters' property. Said plan will be submitted to this board for signature.
Do we have a second? Jim?
Okay, second.
Okay, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board. Thank you.
There we go. That hurt. It's okay.
You can have that, too.
Tenths in your chest, perhaps?
No, not at all.
I'm going to step down a bit. Okay. Thank you.
Mary Ann, just to make sure, we don't have to come in to sign, do we?
No.
You do not. Yep. We have a certificate of vote that Jonathan is allowed to, the board voted that he can sign for you.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
Yep. It's, it's valid until April 1st.
But you do have to drop off your cell phone. Good idea. I wrote it down in my diary, so I guess...
Okay. All right, George, would you read the next two hearings, please?
18 Wilson's Grove. Owners Lori and Joseph Mancinelli request a special permit under section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-story, three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new, non-conforming, co-compliant, three-bedroom home on property located in the Pompanessett Ovalay District and, and R-3 zoning district, map 118, parcel 72, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from January 26, 2022 hearings at the request of the attorney. 18 Wilson's Grove. Owners Lori and Joseph Mancinelli request a variance under sections 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to vary the height requirement to allow for a raise and replace of a single-family residence on property located in the Pompanessett Ovalay District and R, an R3, R-3 zoning district, map 118, parcel 72, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Continued from January 26, 2022 hearings at the request of the attorney.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Father record Kevin Corain, representing the Mancinellis in connection with the applications that are before the Board. The Board may recall that we were here in January, at which time we presented information relative to the raise and replace project, as well as seeking a variance to exceed the minimum height requirements as provided under the bylaw. It was abundantly clear that the Board was not inclined to grant variance relief relative to the height restriction, notwithstanding the objective was to bring this building out of the flood plain, or at least the first floor out of the flood plain. So subsequent to that, in conjunction with our architect designer, we had met with the, he had met with the building commissioner to discuss a proposed revision of the building design, and Brian Foley is here with me this evening. If the Board has any questions for Brian. As a result of that meeting, we redesigned the building. We submitted plans, changing the building and slightly changing the site plan to accommodate the building redesign. The building now complies with the maximum height restriction allowed under the bylaw, and as such, I would withdraw my request for variance relief from that height requirement. If the Board recalls, we proposed a two-story structure at this point, and the structure is non-conforming in that it fails to meet every setback criteria, with the exception of the real lot line. It also fails to meet the existing lot coverage criteria, because this is a relatively small lot of only 3,600 square feet. In each instance, we are improving those conditions, notwithstanding that we have moved the building slightly in the southeastern direction. So to give the Board an indication, the building was moved approximately nine inches to the southeast, and so doing the north westerly side yard, non-conforming setback was improved from eleven point eight feet, and that's eleven point eight, not inches, twelve point, to twelve point six feet. So we have improved that side yard setback right there. At the same time, the opposite side yard setback was reduced from the previous five point five feet to four point nine feet, but still an improvement over the existing two point three feet. The redesign also increased the proposed lot coverage to twenty-seven point ninety-four, which is still a slight improvement over the existing twenty-eight point seventeen feet. The front yard setback, which was at eight point nine, improves to eight point four, and the rear yard setback, which was previously thirty-one, is slightly reduced to twenty-six point nine, but still in conformance with the fifteen-foot rear yard setback criteria. So without repeating everything that was suggested to the board, the last time I suggest to the board that, given the fact that we are now in compliance with the height criteria of the building, and we are improving all the existing non-conformities on the site, that we are creating here a condition which is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. And if you have any questions for me or for Brian, we'd be more than happy to, to respond.
Okay, well, yeah, the main concern I had last time you were here was what you addressed, and I think that is the, was the only sticking point I had. And you are going to withdraw the variance request, so you're just going to go for the, excuse me, special permit?
That's correct.
Okay. I really don't have any questions. Ron?
So there is no additional relief being sought, and there's no expansion of a non-conformity, am I correct?
That is correct.
Everything got better. That one's new, it looks like it was great.
Just want to make sure for the record that that's correct.
Yeah, I think it's great, they get, every, every aspect, they made it better.
I agree.
My opinion.
Bill, any questions, comments? Bill?
No.
How about Jim?
No.
Nothing from Jim? Anybody?
No.
Okay, before we get, go ahead, Chris.
The only thing I had is that the fuses on the right side of the house, I thought you could put a grate there that, is if that overflows, it's going to overflow.
Well, that was the objective of the fuses, to make sure that we wouldn't have any overflow into the neighboring property.
I'm talking about surface, we're not really front off. Just a little, little twelve-inch frame and grate to put over the top of the fuser.
Are you recommending that, Chris?
Yes. It's a minor, minor thing, it's a little block, it's a little rise up.
That's not a problem. Can condition it if the board wants to include that as a condition.
Could you be, could you be a little bit more clear on that, Chris, please?
Just a, put a twelve, twelve-inch drain inlet should be put in the middle of the infiltration chambers on the east side of the house.
So twelve-inch drain inlet in the middle of east side?
Middle of the infiltration chambers.
Infiltration chambers.
So twelve-inch drain in middle of east side of infiltration chamber.
Yeah, middle of the infiltration chambers on the east side of the house.
East side of the house.
Yeah, you had a little back.
Southeast. Southeast.
Infiltration chambers on the east side. The house, how's that? So twelve-inch inlet?
That's all, it's just like what you're doing in the driveway, you're doing a six-inch, it's just a slightly big one.
So that would drain right into that?
Any standing water will.
Right. Infiltration system, correct?
Yeah, it's a small area, but it's.
David, anything?
I have no issues at all, like, like just Kevin said, we sat down and we figured it out, and I don't see any issues with zoning or floodplain issues or anything like that.
Okay, well, I know there's some comments from some people in the audience, and we have some written comments and maybe somebody on the phone, but before we get to that, let's read some comments from other boards and departments. So let's see. Yeah, do you have the Board of Health?
Yep, Board of Health, eighteen Wilson's Grove. Board of Health comments, at the view of the proposed floor plans, three primary bedrooms are shown on the plans which meet the permitted, permitted number of bedrooms and septic capacity per the nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and twelve Title V disposal works construction permits. Demolition requirements of the building for, for the Board of Health include a rodent inspection by a health agent and an asbestos inspection by a private state licensed asbestos inspector prior to the demolition permit sign-off. A septic inspection is not required if the building permit is issued prior to October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Do you have the town engineer?
Yep. Town engineer, eighteen Wilson Grove. The height issue was resolved by simply changing the roof pitch. Also, I think a twelve-inch drain inlet should be put in the middle of the infiltration chambers on the east side of the house.
So we just, yeah.
DPW?
Yes, please.
DPW comment, reference eighteen Wilson Grove. CBA petition. Good morning, Mary Ann, from Catherine Laurent. Good morning, Mary Ann. Shore, Shore Drive, in the vicinity of Wilson's Grove is subject to significant street flooding during storm events. Portions of Wilson's Grove contribute to this flooding. For this reason, as well as general policy, all slow-mo runoff from the property of eighteen Wilson's Grove should be contained on-site, including, but not limited to, the roof runoff. Let me know if the board has any further questions, Catherine.
Okay, so that's all addressed, right?
Has that town engineer confirmed that?
Yeah.
You've confirmed that that is a fact that Catherine's concern has been dealt with?
Yes, I think it's been dealt with, and that's why I wanted to put that drain inlet in to keep everything on the property.
And in doing so, we will comply with her request.
Good. Okay, what else do we hear?
Conservation.
Yeah, go ahead.
From Andrew McManus to, hi, Mary Ann. The Conservation Commission has approved the single-family home teardown, rebuild proposal for eighteen Wilson's Grove. Signed, sincerely, Drew McManus.
Okay, and we have another one from, looks like Conservation. Caitlin Catterett, is that how it's pronounced? And it's today regarding eighteen Wilson's Grove. Hi, Mary Ann. Thank you for providing the revised plan for eighteen Wilson's Grove. We will request hard copies of the plan from BSS Design for our file. The changes to the footprint are minor enough to not require further review from the Conservation Commission. Working our way through this paper here. Okay. All right, we have a letter, excuse me, I guess it's an email. It's two and a half pages typed. So let me start on this one. Stated February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, from Patricia Sandville of fourteen Fireside Drive, Barrington, Rhode Island, and Cynthia Mendelville, forty-nine Highwood Way in Mashpee. Reference eighteen Wilson's Grove petition for special permit. Okay, we are the, oh, dear members of the zoning board of appeals, we are the co-owners of twenty Wilson's Grove, Pompanessett Beach in Mashpee. We write, as abutters, to raise concerns regarding the proposed petition for special permit to raise and replace eighteen Wilson's Grove. We attended that hearing, was originally scheduled for January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, about this petition. The matter was continued when the attorney for the applicant stated that the request for a variance was being withdrawn, and when he requested that the matter generally be rescheduled for February ninth. After the postponement was granted, a member of the zoning board submitted that, stated that written comments regarding the petition could be submitted to the board for its consideration at the February ninth hearing. We ask that this letter be considered. If new plans were submitted to the zoning board, the applicant has not notified us of any proposed changes. Okay. Beginning in the nineteen forties, our grandfather, Theodore Jacobson, built several cottages on original tenting sites on the street, including eighteen twenty Wilson's Grove. We recently learned these are currently the smallest house lots in Massachusetts. The housing question was and is essentially a three-bed, a three-room camp slash cottage. It is not a three-bedroom dwelling, as is stated by the applicant in its petition. The town's field card states that it is a one-bedroom camp-style residence. We know from being in the cottage that it originally had one tiny bedroom and that it currently has two tiny bedrooms. It is absolutely inaccurate to state, as does the petition, that this matter is about a request to seek to demolish an existing non-conforming, single-story, three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new, non-conforming, co-compliant, three-bedroom home. We are extremely concerned that raising a tiny, single-story, two-bedroom cottage and replacing it with a three-story, three-bedroom home will further change the beach community character, contribute to the increased density of the street, and further diminish the privacy of our property and others on the street. Okay, first, we are concerned about how the applicant has developed the new footprint of the proposed home. The applicant's purported reduction in square footage is misleading. It appears that approximately half the square footage of the proposed new footprint is currently outdoor living. Areas, the front deck, the side flagstone patio, the large back deck. We also understand the tidy shed is being torn down, and in doing so, the plans now show a reduction in the square footage of the footprint of the proposed home. In reality, as a simple matter of common sense, there is no reduction. It is, but in actuality, a significant increase in the proposed square footage of the footprint of the home, not to mention the increased square footage associated with changing a one-story cottage to a three-story home. Second, we are concerned that the three-story home will diminish the privacy of our outdoor living areas. The applicant proposes a third-floor roof deck, rooftop deck, that directly overlooks our outdoor living areas and will diminish our enjoyment of our cottage throughout the summer. The proposed deck is literally directly above and a few feet from our outdoor living areas and will give the applicant a bird's eye view of our family's activities. In addition, after raising decking and patios to increase the square footage of the new house, the site plans include structural span of deck over septic tank to be designated by others. Again, privacy is our concern here, and we cannot determine how far back the decking will go. Also, will this figure into the overall allowable square footage? Third, along with the deck, the plan includes an outdoor shower a few feet from our property. We are concerned that this will drain into and contribute to flooding on our property. We've had increased flooding in our basement, particularly since the cottage at twenty-two Wilson's Grove was raised and rebuilt. We are concerned that, that the proposed plan will further exacerbate flooding onto our property. Fourth, we want to make sure that no construction equipment is brought onto our property in order for the applicant to raise the cottage and replace it with a three-story residence and build retaining walls. Fifth, the site plan includes great changes and retaining wall that concerns us regarding parking. Since our cottage was built, we have always parked on the front left side of our cottage, and we expect to continue to be able to use this parking spot. We have grown up spending every summer at the Cape. Our families love the beach and whatever, and the character of Wilson's Grove. We ask that the zoning board continue our, excuse me, we ask that the zoning board consider our interests and concerns as you evaluate the applicant's request to raise a tiny cottage and replace it with a three-story, three-bedroom, year-round home. Respectfully submitted, Patricia Seville and Catherine Mendelville. Okay. Before I get to you, any comments on that?
Several. First off, we all know that lot coverage is based upon structures as they are situated on the lot. So when we suggest that there is a decrease in lot coverage, that includes decking and everything else, because decking and everything else are included as a lot coverage in the zoning bylaw. So the representations made in the presentation are absolutely accurate, that we have reduced the total amount of lot coverage on the lot. Not substantially, but in effect, it has been reduced. I haven't been in the building, so I can't say whether or not there are one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or six bedrooms. I can only rely upon what the engineer has indicated and the plans that he has provided indicating that there are three bedrooms. And I would also point out that the Board of Health has indicated in its comments that it is a three-bedroom system. So the proposal of three bedrooms is completely consistent with conditions on the site where there is already a three-bedroom septic system. It has been represented in, in the email that it's a three-story home. It's not a three-story home, and we corrected that issue with the building commissioner between the last time we were here. In the present time, and we fully understand that, that flooding is not an issue that we can, you know, generate and impact any abutting lot, that we have to keep all our drainage on-site. The, the town's engineer has reviewed the plans. We're well aware that we have to do whatever it has to be done in order to keep the drainage on-site so it doesn't impact abutting lot owners. Nothing that we're proposing on-site, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of elevation or grading, is going to impact at all the ability of the abutter to park on their own property. I fully acknowledge that this is a one-story structure, as is, as was approximately one hundred percent, ninety-five percent of the structures in Pompanessett at one time. All those cottage structures, or the vast majority of those cottage structures, or a majority of those cottage structures have now been replaced with two-story structures. The, I did provide you in the original presentation photos taken down Wilson's Grove towards the beach, and you can see in those photos that most of the buildings on Wilson's Grove are now two-story structures. So there's only so much privacy that one can have if they sit on a thirty-six hundred square foot lot. The current building is only two point three feet from the abutter. Now we're going to be a little bit further away, having moved it over five feet from the abutting property. My client is more than willing to plant a row of arboviti. You can see in one of the photographs that I provided that a row of arboviti was planted on the other side of my client's property by the abutter, who has a two-story structure on the other side of the property. They have planted a row of arboviti which go along the property, the property line, and my clients are more than willing to do that, or if the abutters would prefer a fence, if they feel that would be more appropriate to protecting their privacy, they're more than willing to build a fence between the two property lines as well, if, if that's something that they would, would prefer.
Okay, just one question, on the outdoor shower, how's that going to drain? For the record, your name for the record.
Sure. Brian Foley.
The outdoor shower is just going to tie into the existing drainage system, and for any runoff from that, it will go into the catch basin in the back.
Okay, so it's just not going to go into the grass or whatever?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Are three bedrooms allowed on this lot, no matter what anyway?
I'm assuming they are if the Board of Health has indicated that we can have it.
David?
Board of Health okayed it as a three-bedroom.
Right. I thought so. Okay, I believe we have some comments over here. Come right up if you would. You can have the mic and give us your name and address, if you would. And we'll do one at a time.
My name is Patricia Senville, and this is my sister Cynthia Mandeville.
Okay, so I've already, you've already spoken on this.
Yeah.
Why don't I give you 30 seconds?
Okay.
Because there's other people.
I just wanted to ask what the lot limit in Pompanessett overlay, what is the maximum limit allowed for houses? Homes? What's that?
Setback?
What are you talking about?
Height or setback?
Maximum height.
30 feet?
30 feet. I thought I read in the plan that it was over 30 feet still, with even the revised plan.
Okay, before we address that.
It's so miniature, I can't see it.
All right. We'll do all of her questions at once.
Okay.
So do you have another question?
I want to know, what is the maximum height on the current drawing?
The proposed design is 29 foot 6 inches.
Okay, because I thought it looked like it was already over by the roof deck.
No, that's well below, 30 foot.
Okay, can I come and see your?
Of course.
We have been looking at the elevations because they had elevation shown on those.
Right.
It's elevations above.
Okay.
From the elevation, it's only 30, you know, from the average natural grade, it's 30, 29.6, but the plan showed what the elevations were on site.
Above sea level, right?
Above sea level, correct.
So that's what you were looking at?
Okay.
The numbers, the sea level threw you off.
And they were revised after we dropped the building down. When it was over 30 feet, we dropped the building down, so those numbers.
If I could help, when the applicant came to this board almost a month ago, we sent a pretty clear message that we were, that height was not probably going to be one of the things that this board would consider. Is that a way to say it, I think?
Yes.
Height variance, let's put it that way. Relief from exceeding the maximum height was something that I wasn't going to consider. I can't speak for the rest of this board, but I presume the rest of the board would probably be of that same build.
I agree.
So he left and redesigned with the knowledge that he knew that that was probably going to happen.
Was that the 26th of January? Because I was here, and then I left thinking everything was like it was going to be.
I believe it was the 26th, and I believe Mr. Corain, when he was here, he was leaving, and I said to him something to the effect that you made a very good decision withdrawing at this point, or asking for an extension.
Continuing.
Because he knew, he looked at the board, and he's been in front of this board enough looking at us saying, "It's not going to happen." It wasn't going to happen. From me, I can't speak for the rest of this board.
I agree.
I agree.
Speaking for me, because I agree. We wouldn't allow it.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't allow it. I wouldn't vote on it.
Anyone else? Somebody else? Come right up if you would and give us your name and address. This is for the public record.
My name is Cynthia Mandeville at 18 Wilson's Grove. And indeed, our grandfather did build 18 Wilson's Grove. And my aunt has been renting 18 Wilson's Grove up until COVID started. And it is indeed a two-bedroom structure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anybody on the phones? Anybody calling in? Have a question, comment, concern? Okay. Thank you. Any final comments? Before we take a vote on this, we'll do them one at a time.
I'm going to act, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I've got to ask the applicant for a withdrawal of his variance request.
Yeah, we're going to do that first, right?
Scott? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant, Kevin Corain, request for a withdrawal of variance under Section 17431 for Laura and Joseph Mancinelli of 18 Wilson's Grove.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll do that.
Scott seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so that's withdrawn.
Yes.
All right, so if you could make the motion on the special permit.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Joseph and Laura and Joseph Mancinelli of 18 Wilson's Grove under Section 17417 in one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-story, three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a with a new, non-conforming, code-compliant, three-bedroom home on property located in a Pompanessett overlay district and R-3 zoning district. MAP 118 parcel 72 Mashpee-Mass with the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of special permit under Mass General Law 48, Section 9. Two, plot plan proposed house reconstruction in 18 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee-Mass, prepared for Clancy Construction, scale 1 inch equals 10 feet, date December 14, 2021, drawn by R.A.R., T.J.B., job number 21105. Revisions, change house footprint per architect's plans, February 18, 2022, drawing number B28-116, signed by Thomas J. Bunker, registered land surveyor 32653. Three, house floor plans, Mancinelli Residence, Mashpee-Mass, prepared by Clancy Construction Inc., dated 2/18/22, A1, A0, cover sheet, A1 dot 1, crawl space, A11, floor plans, A20, elevations, A21, elevations, A23, section. And I presume those house plans were revised?
They were.
We should probably put a revision just so it's clear that they were revised and the house was lowered.
You should have copies of the revised plans.
So I understand, but is there an actual revision on the plan stating?
Revision date?
Doesn't have it on this one.
It's not a revision, it's just the date at the bottom.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make note that this, that those plans.
2/18/22?
Yes.
2/18/22.
Okay, so the plans are dated 2/18/22, and they were revised from an original applicant, or a prior application. Yeah, yeah. 2/18. And they were revised from a prior application, which clearly depicted the need of a variance because of height requirement.
That is correct.
Okay. Number four, condition on all town departments' comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health. Number five, condition all, any and all changes to plans will require the applicant to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number six, also, the plans have to clearly depict and be amended to add a 12-inch drain inlet at the middle of the infiltration chamber on the east side of the house.
Is that going to do it?
I second.
Okay, Jim seconds it. So Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Nice project.
You can have that one.
You're right here?
No. I can't leave. I just stepped down. There's another one happening.
No, I'm going to give you. No, I don't see. I commend, decide everything.
Plan, plan, plan.
We didn't sign anything on baby.
Okay, so let's, let's have one meeting, and we'll continue. George, if you would read the next hearing, please.
New hearings. 55 Horseshoe Benway, petitioner Carmen Shay, Shay Environmental, requests a variance under Section 174-33, setbacks from wetlands to allow for construction of a stairway to a pond on property located in an R-3 zoning district. MAP 48 parcel 2, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi, can anybody hear me?
So is.
Carmen is on.
My name is Carmen Shay from Shay Environmental Services. I'm here to represent the applicant, Joan Mancinelli, regarding 55 Horseshoe Benway. Hopefully, this is a pretty straightforward project, where we're basically looking to construct a four-foot-wide stairway from the top of the inland bank to basically the bottom of the bank within five feet of wetlands so that the owner of the property can have access to the, basically, it's a stony beach at the bottom of the bank without having to, you know, basically, just to make a proper regress. We have been through conservation, and they have approved this, this plan, and, you know, essentially, this is why we're just coming for you relative to Section 17433 of the zoning bylaws.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments on this. Scott, do you have any?
Not really.
We know what the lot coverage is. He's adding it.
Pretty good-sized lot.
It's a good-sized lot, I'm sorry.
Sir, how much relief are you requesting? 50 foot, I believe, is the setback required from wetlands. What is the relief you're seeking?
45 feet.
So you're, are you depicting 45, and you're seeking 5? Are you showing 5 and seeking 45?
Well, we're seeking to be five foot from edge of wetlands, so we're seeking relief of 45.
Thank you.
Essentially, as you can see, it's a fairly steep bank that goes right down basically almost to the water's edge.
72 to 50.
There was an existing stairway that had not been permitted, which we have removed based on conservation. You know, they basically sewn order to do so. And so we're just looking to construct this with the proper building permit and in conformance with all building codes and zoning, and also conservation, obviously.
Okay, anybody have any comments? Anybody else? Bill?
No.
Jim?
No.
Pretty straightforward, is right.
Ron?
Yep.
The new stairway says 110 square feet, so I can't imagine there would be a lot coverage if you're looking at the size of the home and the size of the lot.
I could tell there was just no computation.
Yeah, there's nothing on it. I just happened to notice that it has.
I hate to see no computation of lot coverage on the plane.
What do we have for comments, George?
Board of Health, 55 Horseshoe Benway. Board of Health comments, no comments. Conservation Department, from Caitlin Fedora to Maria Morano. Mary Ann, yes. At the 210 meeting, we'll be issuing the order of condition shortly. Signed, Caitlin.
It says, the email before was from Mary Ann to Kate saying, "Did the commission approve the plans of 55 Horseshoe Benway?" Her response was yes at the 210 meeting. I happened to notice that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Town engineer, 55 Horseshoe Benway, no comments.
David, anything?
No, no problems at all. Just want to have a building permit pulled and do inspections, proper inspections from environmental.
Okay. Any comments from anybody in the audience? About, on the phone, anybody? Okay, seeing none. Ron, would you make a motion, please?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Joan Maudleski of 55 Horseshoe Bend Way. Said variance is under Section 174-33, setback from wetlands, allow for construction of a stairway to a pond or property located in R-three zoning district, map forty-eight, parcel two, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record is Joan Maudleski with the following condition. Number one, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions for variance under Mashpee Law Forty-Eight, Section Ten. Two, plot plan prepared for Joan Maudleski, 55 Horseshoe Bend Way, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Shea Environmental Services, two oh one Plum Hollow Road, eastbound with mass scale one inch to thirty feet, drawn by CES date, January seventh, twenty twenty-one, project number fifty-five, sheet one up two. Two, conditioned on all town, town department comments written in the record. Three, the board, uh, in issuing the variance setback from wetlands, issuing the amount of relief is forty-five feet. The requested amount is fifty feet, the, the plan depicts five feet, so the total relief sought is forty-five feet. Last issue, conditioned on any and all changes, any and all changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals. Also, I did forget one thing, the billing inspectors requested that a building permit shall be required and all inspections obtained prior to the usage of said stairs.
Sure.
Okay, Jim seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes? Very good.
Thank you very much, people have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, I think you're stepping down for the next one. I'm going to have Brad take Scott's place as a voting on this. So, George, would you read the next new hearing?
One sixty-two Whipple Will Circle. Owners Stuart and Dobson and Barbara A. Dobson request a variance under Section 174-31 of a zoning bylaws to vary the height of a single-family residence on property located in R-three zoning district, map one twenty-three, one twenty-five, parcel one forty, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Corain. And I have the pleasure of representing Stuart and Barbara Dobson in connection with this variance request relative to the height of a recently reconstructed or built, uh, structure on their property. It, uh, was the subject matter of a variance that this board granted, uh, back, uh, in, I think, two thousand, uh, two thousand and eighteen. At that time, uh, as I've indicated in my written remarks, the bylaw did not have the current raise and replace special permit criteria, but Commissioner Mendoza at the time felt that every project that called for a raise and replace required variance relief if it was on a non-conforming lot. So we did apply for variance relief and got a variance to raise and replace a single-family structure on this non-conforming lot. The previous structure as well was non-conforming. I've tried to give the board a, a history in the written remarks that I provided, uh, so that they would have an indication of how this all occurred. The building is complete. The building has been complete since June of two thousand and twenty-one and has been without a certificate of occupancy since June of two thousand and twenty-one, as I understand it, because there is a height violation. The building is one point eight feet higher than the permissible thirty-five-foot restriction in this particular zoning district. At some point during this construction process, a mistake was made. I did provide the board with a litany of how things progressed. A foundation was put in, a foundation was inspected. A subsequent to that, I'm advised by the builder that he engaged the services of an engineer to go out and give him the parameters for the construction of the frame based upon the elevations of the foundation at the time. Subsequently, that same engineer provided certifications as to the height of the building. The frame was put up. There was a frame inspection that was conducted by Charlie. I was present at that frame instruction, uh, inspection. And at that time, uh, we still had no clear indication that there was a zoning violation relative to the height of the building. Charlie had raised a couple of issues, which I don't recall, but I believe those issues were red, were addressed, but subsequently Charlie raised some concerns, uh, questions relative to the height of the building, as I understand it. No stop work order has ever been issued on this building, and after the construction of the frame, the building was completed. The building, as you can see, and I did provide the board with a photograph of the building, which I attached to my written remarks, has a fairly complicated, uh, roof design. It isn't your simple, single ridge line, but it has several ridge lines based upon dormers that run from to back on the entire structure. So, uh, there is also a widow's walk that is on the top of the structure, and as we know, a widow's walk can extend up to thirty-five feet maximum, uh, and exceed the thirty-five-foot maximum in the, in this particular zoning district. I clearly understand the board's concerns relative to relief from height. I've fully explained that to my clients and to their contractor, uh, and, uh, I did attach the certifications that were provided to that contractor by the engineer, and we have a problem. We have a one-point-eight building, a one-point-eight roof that exceeds, uh, one, exceeds the height restriction by one-point-eight feet, and the remedy to resolve that is either the removal of the roof or to seek variance relief from this board. And I don't cast any blame on anybody in this particular situation. It would have been, it would have been, uh, nice if, if this thing had been discovered at an earlier point of view and a stop work order had been issued before all this work was done, but that didn't happen. And if you take a look at the photograph, it's barely, it's tough to determine that the building is actually exceeds the height. In fact, the existing building, excuse me, is thirty-five feet, or less than thirty-five feet from the current, uh, elevations on the lot. But as we know, our bylaw requires a height to be determined from the previous natural existing grade. One of the things that happened in this particular case is that a, uh, mounded septic system had to be installed because there is unusually high water table in this particular area. When that mounded system was installed, the, the grades on that lot changed, and I think that may have been partially contributing to the, to the situation we have here relative to the building height being too high. You can see those other three ridges that exist are all beneath the thirty, the thirty-five-foot, but it's that middle ridge, this is a hip roof building, and it's that middle ridge that exceeds that building height. And, uh, we would ask the board's indulgence, uh, in allowing this building to remain without to have, having to disassemble that complex roof, uh, structure that we, that we have there. And when one balances the benefit to the town, and I understand that the board, you know, has an interest in making sure its bylaws are adhered to, and, you know, I've been doing this long enough to, to understand that, but I think each, each case needs to be decided on its own merits and the grant of relief in one situation doesn't set a precedence for any other situation. But I would ask the board to balance the virtual benefit to the town by, uh, requiring the structure to be taken down or the roof to be taken down versus the significant harm that would befall the owners of this building, the Dobsons, in having to do so. So I really don't have much else to add, and I'm more than happy to respond to any questions, uh, concerns that the board has.
Well, I understand the problem, and I know this has been going on for a long time.
It has.
And I also understand that I have a lot of comments from people in this building. So I'm going to read these comments, and everybody sitting on this hearing can decide for themselves what we want to do, and we'll take comments from people in the audience after I read these comments. Unless we have, we have things we want to discuss first before I go into the comments. Any questions or comments before I go into these, by anyone?
Yes. We've been very careful to really enforce the, uh, the height, and by not enforcing the proper height now, uh, I think the people who went before us, uh, in a situation like that will be rightfully profoundly disappointed, and, uh, whether we do in the future. We're really in a conundrum here, uh, where we feel, I think, very badly for the petitioner, but I think we also have to remember our past and future. And I remember previously, uh, when a contractor said to me, um, when I was chairman of a conservation commission, he said, it's easier to ask for permission, it's easier to ask for, um...
Forgiveness.
For help than it is for permission to do something. So there I stand.
Okay. Anybody else? George, anything? Charlie?
No.
Okay.
Bill has his hand up, China.
Go ahead, Bill.
I thought he did.
Yeah, um, I, I found in my paperwork a letter from, hmm, Weller and Associates.
Yeah, I'm going to read that in, Bill.
Yeah, okay.
I have both of those letters.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I, I think that's kind of important.
No question. All right, let me start. All right, the first one, this is no particular order. This is from the town engineer, Chris J. Gallagher, P.E. It's dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, this is last June, to Dave Morris, Mashpee Building Commissioner, reference one sixty-two Whipple Will Circle. Dave, as per your request, I measured the height and elevation of the newly constructed home at the above referenced address yesterday. Survey data was based on the elevation reference of a nail at a twelve-inch pine listed on the plot plan of elevation equals twelve-point-zero. Using a topcon...
Be autolike.
Thank you. And level, the following elevations were measured to be as follows. Cellar floor slab, ten-point-zero. Top of foundation, fourteen-point-eight. Top of highest roof ridge, forty-seven-point-zero. Based on the above measurements, the original existing site plan of ten-point-zero, as shown on the original survey plot plan, this home does not comply with the maximum height required of thirty-five feet in accordance with the Mashpee zoning board bylaws, section one seventy-four thirty-one. Footnote, four, the existing height is thirty-seven feet above original existing grade, two feet higher than allowed. Have any questions, feel free to call. Sincerely, Chris Gallagher. Okay. This is an email from Chris again. This one's dated February seventeenth of this year. John, I do not recommending, recommend granting this variance as there is definitely no hardship. The situation was created by not adhering to the approved plan. If this home was built according to the plan, the height requirement would have been met, and the first floor would have been above floodplain. The plan called for a basement slab elevation of ten-point-zero with a found, with a top of foundation of twelve-point-two and a finished first floor elevation of thirteen-point-five. This allowed for a crawl space of two-point-two feet. When the foundation was poured, the builder didn't follow the plan. The basement slab was ten-point-zero in compliance with the plan, but the crawl space was increased to four-point-eight feet to an elevation of fourteen-point-eight with a finished grade of sixteen-point-one versus planned elevation of thirteen-point-five, thus raising the roof height to elevation forty-seven. The original existing grade was ten, therefore the building height is forty-seven or thirty-seven above the original existing grade, when the maximum allowed is thirty-five feet. I feel this is most likely done knowingly to create a more usable four-point-eight-foot-high crawl space. As requested by Dave Morris, we went to the site and measured from the slab to the peak of the roof with the results shown on the attached June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one letter. Regards, Chris J. Gallagher, P.E., Mashpee Town Engineer. Another email minutes later on the same date from Chris. John, one thing about this violation that I find real disturbing is that the engineer wrote two letters, see attached, that appear to have, have tied, tried to cover up this nonconformity in August twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. He acknowledged the dwelling to be thirty-three-point-one feet above the top of the foundation with a height of thirty-four-ten, above existing natural grade of elevation ten feet. With a top of foundation at fourteen-eight, this makes the building peak equivalent to forty-seven-nine or thirty-seven-point-nine versus thirty-five. The second letter dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one states currently the existing grade elevation of ten and a top of foundation of fourteen-eight and a height to the ridge of forty-four-point-nine, thirty-point-one feet above top of foundation versus thirty-three-one in his previous letter. He knowingly certified the height was in compliance when he knew it wasn't. Chris J. Gallagher, P.E., Mashpee Town Engineer. Next one is from Willer, Weller and Associates, P.O. Box four-one-seven, Centerville, Mass. It's dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, to the Mashpee Building Department, reference one sixty-two Whipple Will Circle. Please be advised that on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, we determine the natural grade around the foundation at one sixty-two Whipple Will Circle to be one foot nine inches below the top of the foundation, and the dwelling is thirty-three feet, one inch from the top of the foundation to the top of the highest ridge beam. That makes the building height thirty-four feet, ten inches above the average grade of the building. This is a stamped, signed, uh, letter from a professional land surveyor, Stephen W. Rumba, number three-five-seven-nine-one, registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, signed by him. I'll get to you in a minute. I have another letter from the same person, Stephen Rumba, dated March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, same deal, Mashpee Building Department, same thing, one sixty-two Whipple Will. Please be advised that on that, please be advised that on that based upon a site plan by BSS Design dated April twelfth, twenty eighteen, we determine the average natural grade around the foundation at one sixty-two Whipple Will to be at an elevation of ten-point-zero. The top of the existing foundation is at elevation fourteen-point-eight. The height of the ridge is at elevation forty-four-point-nine. Therefore, the maximum height of the building is thirty-four-nine, above the natural average grade. All of the elevations are based upon NAVD eighty-eight data, signed and stamped by registered land surveyor, Stephen W. Rumba, again, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is from Dave Morris, Building Commissioner, dated February seventeenth at one forty-seven P.M. John, I echo Chris and Evan's input on this, and you have everything you need for an informed judgment. David Morris, Building Commissioner. And last, from the town planner, Evan Lera, dated February seventeenth of this year, nine twenty-seven A, Jonathan, here is an assessment of the facts as I know them pertaining to one sixty-two Whipple Will. Number one, the Board of Appeals issued a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence at that address. Two, after approval and having no appeals filed, the property owners began construction of their home. Three, throughout the construction changes to the approved plans were made without any review or approval by the Board of Appeals. These changes resulted in the replaced home exceeding the maximum height requirements of the zoning district. Five, now that staff has identified this issue and confirmed that without approval, the final product deviated from the approved plan set and created the new nonconformity, the petitioners requesting a variance after the fact to make the non-compliance a non-issue. This lot has no unique characteristics due to shape, topography, or soil conditions that necessitate a variance. In consideration of the aforementioned facts, I would recommend that the Board of Appeals deny this variance, first because the property is absent any hardship as defined in MGL Chapter forty-eight, and further, the manner with which this new nonconformity was created shows a irrelevance to the established rules and regulations that the town approved to facilitate the raising and replacing of pre-existing nonconforming structures. This new nonconformity was created despite having approved special permit where the plans cited in your written decision were ignored for one reason or another, and as such, approving this variance request would establish a poor precedent moving forward. This issue, issue needs to be rectified with the building commissioner, the property owner's contractor, and the architect to archive compliance. Thank you, Evan Lera, town planner. And I think that about says it all. Did you have any comment? Come up if you would, and for the record, your name.
Dennis, Dennis Belzerini? I'm a neighbor, and for a while, I don't know how they got this permit to raise and release because before we even went to the town meeting to change the zoning, they already started building on this house. They ripped it down, and they already had their plan in place, and I don't understand how Kevin said he got the okay from the building inspector when he didn't even know if this was going to pass or not. So that, that's one question. And while they were building this, I went to Charlie and I said, Charlie, that house is too high. They're not measuring from where the property used to be. I went and measured it and if you go to the top, I think that widow's deck is like 53 feet for the railing. I don't know if you count that, but I measured 42 feet high. My son-in-law has one of the things that whenever they use, you set the thing and it goes and measures it. And then I don't know how they let this keep on going and going and let them build this when they saw, when you just walked down my, down my, from my house, two doors down, you look at this house, you say, how high is that house? All my neighbors were asking me. I didn't know you could build a house that high. And I said, no, you can. It's got to be 35 feet. And they all complained about it. So I hope you don't pass this, this variance because you're supposed to get a variance before you build, not after you build. And they go, two houses in my neighborhood, that architect. The other house is much big too. I don't know how that one passed. And they've got a lot of problems with that.
One sec, Bill.
Yep. That's all I have to say. I appreciate if you really, what everybody said. And that engineer that measured it, he knew he has to take it from the original grade, not where they made it, the dirt mound. They put the wall up and measured from there 30, 35 feet.
Thank you.
It's a disgrace. Thank you.
Bill?
John, I just wanted to make sure we got the record correct. The second letter you read in, I think I'm looking at the same letter and you quoted the date as whatever you quoted and I show March 26, 2020.
Okay.
And you quoted a different date.
I have two of them here. One's March 15.
The first letter was 19, but the second letter was, what I'm reading is March 26, 2020.
I'm reading March 15, 2021 from Willer &amp; Associates.
I guess.
Okay. I don't have that. I don't have that.
Okay. Maybe there's more.
The letter that I'm looking at said exactly the same thing that you said. So apparently there was an earlier letter too.
Thank you, Bill.
I just want, I just want to add one more thing to the record. I have a communication. I did reach out to the owner of the engineer, Tris Weller, and followed up a phone call and I wrote an email to him, 527-21, that I am requesting a letter to explain the 3-foot contradiction in the letters dated 829-19 and 515-2021. And I didn't, I never received that letter.
You've never received an answer?
Correct.
So can I ask one more question? Are we saying that the, the letter that was sent and stamped by the engineer is giving us incorrect information?
That's correct.
I would say that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
And I would, I guess I have a couple of comments. One, one, we had an engineer, Falmouth Engineering go out and measure the building. So it's 1.8 feet is the actual measurement. He went out, Mike Boselli went out and measured it and it's 1.8 feet above the required. I think Chris had mentioned 2 feet. It's not 2 feet. It's 1.8. To respond to Dennis's concern, we got a variance, Dennis, before that bylaw was adopted because that's what the building commissioner, Mike Mendoza, at that time required.
But you couldn't rent, you couldn't rent the house then.
Well, it had nothing to do with the, the plans that were originally approved by this board showed a billing height of 35 feet. So it, this had occurred during the construction process that the building was built too high. I can't speak to whether or not the design of the building was changed. You know, the change in the, from the original plans. I have no idea that the crawl space increased from the original plans. I just have no information in that regard. I guess my only, my only, my only question, you know, would be that if, if even Chris wrote a letter in 2020 indicating that the billing was too high, wasn't, why wasn't a stop word order issued at that point in time? Because it would have saved, I mean, that time it was just a frame, right? The house was complete in 2020?
No, it was 21. It was 21. It was in August. It was in August.
I guess Charlie had raised the issue in 2020. And if a stop word order, work order had been issued at that time, a lot of the construction wouldn't have been done. The frame could have been corrected at that time.
Can I ask a question of any builders here?
That would be me.
When you're building a house, isn't it every so often? Because I don't know any of this. Don't you have to go to the building commissioner and say, come out here and check this to make sure it's right?
Oh, there's various steps of construction that you have to have aside.
So isn't, isn't it really up to the builder, not the building commissioner?
Oh, I think it all lies on the builder in this issue. I don't.
And that occurred in this case.
So if it didn't happen, isn't that the builder?
It did happen. There was a frame inspection done on this site. I was there. There was a frame inspection done by Charlie.
Yeah, but Kevin, we, there's a letter in the file that says that it meets height code.
I understand that.
That's, that's the mistake right there. Somebody could have, Charlie could have relied on that and said, I got a piece of paper that says this thing meets code.
But he didn't rely on that.
Well, all I can say is, is it seems to me this whole issue was because an engineer, in my opinion, this is just my opinion from what I've seen in the record, an engineer or a land surveyor certified the height of a building from an existing grade and not, from a, from a change grade, not existing grade, and he put a stamp on it and said it meets code.
I can't argue with you.
There's the fault.
Chris?
Typically, I'm sure Dave doesn't go out on a job and do a frame inspection and pull out a transit he doesn't own. The auto light he doesn't own, the level he doesn't own.
That's what this is about, right?
Yes, he doesn't own and shoot the elevation of the top of the roof.
And I can tell you something, Kevin.
He's out there seeing that the frame.
10 years ago, 5 years ago, some time ago, we weren't even, I wasn't even, all the towns I work in, they weren't even questioning height issues, right? Now you have to not only asset, foundation has built, but have height has built. That's come into fruition the last couple, 2 or 3 years, all right? So I can tell you, you know, code inspections are changing over time. But it seems to me, and the record's very clear to me, that the, that the person that, that should have come forward didn't come forward and he works for the, for the people who built this home, who owned this home. And that's their engineer.
And that's where the fault lies.
Exactly.
And that's who the, in my opinion, who the owners should be talking to.
I, I'm not arguing that point. I'm telling you, I understand. I understand that, that a mistake was made. I fully understand.
But I, I don't think that Charlie made a mistake and I, I don't think anyone made a mistake here other than, in my opinion, where it should have been caught was when that engineer went out there and looked at it, which would have been early on, okay, right, early on, he should have said to his owner, to the person who, to his, you know, client, hey, your building's 1.8 too high. We got to deal with it now. I can't certify it. That's what should have happened.
Obviously, I'm not in the, in the construction industry, but I would think that Charlie would have relied on a stamped letter from the engineer.
I would presume that today, I would presume that David today, that's what he relies on, is that stamped letter.
That's what I expect.
And you don't go out there and measure, do you?
No, not at all.
So that could happen today if this person or another person did the same thing.
The finished one contradicted.
But obviously, but obviously, somebody didn't rely upon it because this issue has been brought up.
I think the engineers.
Somebody didn't rely upon it, which was out of the ordinary.
Well, I think the question that begs to be asked is where was this raised? Where did this come into context? Where did this come out?
They did the foundation. What happened is when you do a foundation, as you know as a builder, you set up your level, you know, and you shoot the proper base of the foundation, which they got their cellar floor perfectly exactly right.
And the top of concrete.
And they made their top of concrete 4.8 feet so they'd have a crawl space. So when they, they were wrong when they did the very foundation before there was ever a piece of wood on it. And whoever did the foundation knew that they were doing it too high.
So who asked for the height certification? Who asked for the height certification? Because back then, I don't believe we were doing height certification.
The height certification came at the height of the building, not at the foundation.
No, no, no. My point is, is who asked for the heights? I don't believe back when, back 2, 3 years ago, I don't know when we transitioned to height certifications because different towns certified at different times.
Who were they written to? Charlie?
Yeah, so Charlie must have requested a height certification somewhere down the line.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we have, we got two, we got one for the frame which said that it was a foot, a foot point nine off the existing grade. So we conformed. But the second one, they came at a finished, at a finished construction, contradicted that by 3 feet. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is the house is either 30 feet point one or it's 33.1. So I called the, the engineer and I said, both these cannot be right.
Right.
Both of them cannot be correct. Give me an explanation. Never did. And I end up, Chris just started getting out there. I needed to verify it. I used my right as a, according to the building code to get a third-party opinion and that's what I did.
So it seems to be, Kevin, the process from the town was correct and that requested a certification from an individual, individual that was certified to give that certification and stamp it and he didn't do, seems the record shows, he didn't do the correct number.
I think that there was a mistake by the engineer and I'm not going to go into a lot of background and information that I may be aware of relative to personalities between various parties that are involved in this construction.
You know what the bottom line is?
I'm not going to get into it. I understand where we are.
From one member, if you came to me as one member of this board and asked to go to that height, I wouldn't have approved it.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a client.
No way.
Generally speaking, as I told you when I came in for the, for the last one in January, I generally tell a client not to come in for that.
Don't, one member here, don't go over a lot of coverage.
But I'm here because these folks, these folks, you know, have been victimized by this whole process. It isn't a hardship that they created themselves. They've been victimized by it. A mistake was made somewhere along the line in this process. That foundation may have been raised because of the mounted septic system.
But I don't think that's up to us.
I don't think we can, it wasn't really a mistake.
But I mean, the builder should be able to add and subtract.
Well, from the owner's perspective, somebody made a mistake.
To go after the builder and the engineer.
I don't think anybody in this community, meaning the professionals in this community, made any mistakes. I believe that it's somewhere else. I'm not going to point, you know, I've already pointed, probably shouldn't have, but I, you know, you make that decision.
I'm not saying anybody.
And I don't think the property owner made a mistake.
Locally, they made a mistake. I'm just saying that it would have been nice if we had a stop work order when it came to light.
Jim's got a question.
The question is not who's to blame, but what the violation is and what we're going to do about it.
It's 1.8 feet from what I'm hearing. And I'm more than willing to make a motion and, and, you know, where it goes from there, who votes what, if that, if the chairman asks me to do so.
Before we do that, do we have any final comments? Bill?
Can I, can I make it? I don't think, I think we're just going to make a vote on approving or denying the variance. And I don't think it's in our purview to do anything else.
Right.
Great.
One of the things that concerns me the most is the letters by the engineer. And I think to kind of look the other way, as Evan says, is the wrong thing to do in setting a precedent. That's just my opinion, but.
I, I think, John, I think our, our job tonight is to approve or deny a request. And I think it's up to the
Anybody have any more comments, questions?
Building commissioner to do whatever he needs to do to remedy the, the height violation. I don't think it's up to us. I agree with you, Bill.
Why don't you make a motion?
All right, so I'll make a motion, the affirmative.
Yep.
If you want to vote against my motion, that means you're going to be voting against the variance, which means you're going to be turning down the variance, correct? So I'm going to make it the affirmative. So I'd like to make a motion.
Right.
I'm going to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance in the amount of 1.8 feet to Stuart M. Dobson and Barbara A. Dobson of 162 Whippa Will Circle under Section 17431 of the zoning bylaw to vary the height of the single family, of single-family residents on property located in our 3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 140 Mashpee, Mass. Again, the amount of the, of the relief is 1.8 feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim seconds. So you know how you're voting. Yes is to give the variance, no is to not give the variance. So we have a second. I'll start with you, Jim. How do you vote?
I vote not to give them a variance.
Bill?
No.
Brad?
No.
Ron?
No.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Look at this paper.
Yeah, it's two Whippa Walls.
Okay, Scott around? Let's get Scott back in here.
Somebody got, where is he?
Probably fell asleep out there. Georgie.
He was sleeping.
Wake him up. All right, Scott is back. And George, would you read the first other business?
Other business, 29 slash 41 Echo Road, M3 Ventures Incorporated, B slash B dash A, Triple M requests a modification to SP dash 215 dash 33, 219 dash 36, and 2020 dash 28. Closed building footprint will be reduced from 3,700 feet to 3,600 square feet for a single story and will be aesthetically more keeping to the Cape Cod architecture.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight on this matter with a very simple request. No variances, no height restrictions, just a very simple request. The, and I have with me Leigh Ann Anchner and Kevin O'Reilly, who are both principals in the Triple M management who operate the marijuana facility on Echo Road. As you recall, a permit was originally granted. Then we came in for a modification to that permit to put an addition on the building. That, what you see there is the addition that the board approved, the 3,700 square feet. Then we came back to the board asking for the ability to construct a couple of wings to the existing structure which could be utilized during the construction phase. And the board granted the modification to the special permit for the construction of the two wings. And the purpose of this new construction and the wings was to allow for adult use, our recreational use marijuana because the original building that is on the site currently was for medical marijuana use exclusively. So this was the building that was presented to design and site plan was approved by design and site plan and was then subsequently approved as part of a modification to the special permit. It was determined by, by the operators of the business that, that that building just didn't make practical sense both from a cost perspective and really isn't consistent with what we have for typical, you know, Cape Cod design and even design of what was already on the site. So we went to design review. Design review approved this change in the design of the building and that's essentially all we're here to discuss. I have asked for a minor modification because we are not increasing the lot coverage. We are in essence reducing the total lot coverage on the site because the building's smaller. And so it's within the, it's within the footprint of the size of the building that was originally improved, approved. It's going to be connected to the other building via that constructed enclosed breezeway that you see there. The operation itself is not changing. There's a separate entrance and a separate exit for both the recreational use and the medical use. The building that currently houses the operation will be used largely for office space for the operators and employees of the facility. All the security measures and the like remain the same. So really, all this is a design, is a design change. So really, all this is a design, is a design change. A design change that has been approved unanimously and with open arms by the design review committee. So I figure we'll keep it simple. There's really nothing else to add. I think we fall within the parameters of a minor modification of the special permit, and we would ask the board to grant that relief. And if they have any questions, we're certainly here to respond.
Okay. Yeah, I was in that design review meeting and have no issues whatsoever with this. I agree it's a minor modification.